There's a fly buzzing around here, it's making five.
Yeah.
Very faint.
Jeff? Nice article.
Creeps on them.
Oh, it really is. I thought you were kidding.
No, I'm not. Need an electric fly swatter.
Have you ever known these two have something to do with that?
Nope.
Here, where's that fly?
I'll give you five points if you can bail the crap out of him.
Five points?
Five points.
Or five dollars?
If I had five dollars, I'd give it to her.
Where does the points go towards?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you know how like you go to the arcade and you get the little tickets, you know, and then you trade in for a pencil eraser or something? I'm sure I can find a pencil eraser.
Hi, fly, come here.
I killed a fly once with a rubber band, just by shooting it like this.
You can't prove that.
What are you, a rabbi?
My sister witnessed it.
Well, get her on the phone.
Yeah.
And she's not even a wool neck anymore, so she's frustrating.
And I don't trust her. How do I know she's really your sister?
She's also not an attorney, therefore she's frustrating.
Do you have any need to see her face?
What did you do this week to deserve that?
I don't know yet. My wake probably.
By the way, I'm sitting in my office today and I get a gas station front window. My staff is like, there's someone here for you. I'm like, who is it? It's an attorney I have seen like eight years.
Oh, really?
Just knew I was sitting in here. After being caught here doing a bad thing. And to stop, I just say, I'm like.
It was one of your teammates.
Yeah, friend of my parents, yeah.
So when I did the meeting, I wrote, I actually wrote it down on the paper. And I still miss it. And I was, I lost this week.
Call me.
This year, the Macy's great hits the one.
We have a rope, isn't it?
Yeah. That's pretty cool.
Yeah, that's cool. I wonder if we do anything special change.
Have you ever been out to Detroit?
I'm always cooking dinner.
When I was little, my parents used to take us with the ladders and sit up high as you could see. Right in the back. But I grew to live in a Macy's or a Plaza. It's a great, it's called the Great Company.
Good evening.
Here we go.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I would like a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So move.
Support.
Motion was made by Commissioner Glickman and supported by Commissioner Swindell. Is there discussion on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. Motion's carried. Who knows that said yes? Okay, now for the minutes.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on October 20th, 2025.
Support.
Motion was made by Commissioner Glickman and supported by Commissioner Swindell. Is there discussion regarding the minutes? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the minutes say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. That motion's carried. Now's the time in our agenda for public comments. Please raise your hand and I will call on you. And you have three minutes total if you'd like to speak. Does anybody want to talk right now? Okay, there's another time at the end of the meeting.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, yes. Now I remembered last time. Thank you.
Holy Spirit, we invite your presence here. Thank you, Lord, for all that you do for our community. Lord, thank you for all the people that are gathered here. Each one of them are invested in our city or they wouldn't be here. Grateful for those people that, that want to put effort and energy into this city. We love this city, Lord, and we're grateful for your hand upon it and the safety that you've given it. It's an honor for me, Lord, to come to you and ask for your hand of safety on our city, on our first responders, on all the people that work at the hospital, that help those that are sick or injured. But I pray that you be with this meeting tonight, that you'd help settle each person's mind, heart, and soul. I already want to give special thanks for Commissioner Swindell and Mayor Mark Quart for their time, energy, efforts that they put into the city, the commitment that they gave. We appreciate them and we're grateful for their service. Be with us the rest of the night. Help us to return home to our families safely. Be with us tomorrow during the election. Lord, you, you already have the results, so thank you for what you're going to do forward in this city. I pray all these things in your precious Son Jesus' name.
Billisting.
Commissioner Brady?
Sure. I make a motion to approve the bill listing for November 3rd, 2025, in the amount of $1,393,181.56.
Support. Okay, motion was made by Commissioner Brady and supported by Commissioner Swindell. Is there any discussion regarding that motion? Okay, hearing none. Amona, would you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Swindell?
Yes.
That motion's carried. There are no proclamations this evening, not public hearings, so we'll go right to our administrative reports to the IFT number one under G1. Commissioner Petrie?
I'd like to adopt the resolution number 2025-15 to revoke industrial facilities exemption certificate, number 2014-145, effective immediately for Testing Services Group LLC located at 751 McCormick Drive.
Support. Motion was made by Commissioner Petrie and supported by Commissioner Glickman. Is there discussion regarding this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. Okay, that motion's carried. The next one is letter of intent for round three. That's under the Michigan Neighborhood CDVGs.
Madam Mayor. Commissioner Swindell? Make a motion to approve the grant administrator to submit a new letter of intent to reapply for round three of the Michigan Neighborhood CDVG program with the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, Villila Magna Opera House Project.
Support.
Okay, motion was made by Commissioner Swindell and supported by Commissioner Petrie. Is there discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. That motion's carried. And now we have the on-premises liquor license for Excadeia, Madam Mayor. Commissioner Glickman?
I'm, I move to adopt the resolution for an on-premises liquor license for Chris and Christina Hare.
Are hers.
Owners of Excadeia located at 55 West Nefesing Street.
Support. Motion was made by Commissioner Glickman, supported by Commissioner Swindell. Is there any discussion on that motion? Commissioner Atwood?
Yes, they are personal friends of mine, so I'm just wondering if I should abstain from the vote or is that a problem?
No, no issues unless you have a financial interest.
Okay, I just always want to make sure whenever I get friends with people.
Well, just to extend on that, I would agree though that while you probably don't have to abstain from the vote, it is always a good idea to make it known that you might have one and so that nobody asks questions later on.
Yep.
All right, so all those in favor of the motion say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. That motion has carried. And then the next one is we need, these are for signatories, signatures. Choice One Sports Official Bank Account.
Madam Mayor.
Commissioner Swindell?
Make a motion to approve a change in signatories to the Choice One Sports Official Bank Account as presented.
Support.
Motion was made by Commissioner Swindell and supported by Commissioner Atwood. Is there discussion regarding this? Hearing none. Then all those in favor of the motion say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. That motion's carried. Re-zoning for B2 to general business, that's under G5.
Madam Mayor?
Commissioner Glickman?
I move to adopt an, yes, I move to adopt an ordinance amendment to Chapter 7. Is that the right one?
Uh, yes.
Zoning ordinance, Article 7.02.02A40 of the General Ordinances of the City of Lapeer.
Support.
Okay, motion was made by Commissioner Glickman and supported by Commissioner Petrie. Is there discussion regarding this one? Hearing none then. All those in favor of the motion say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. That motion's carried. And we have the triple net lease agreement for the Clover Group.
Madam Mayor.
Commissioner Brady?
I make a motion to approve the lease between the City of Lapeer and Clover Group Anon Incorporated for the use of the property at 3496 Davidson Road as presented and authorized the city manager to sign on behalf of the city.
Support.
Okay, motion was made by Commissioner Brady and supported by Commissioner Swindell. Is there discussion on this? Hearing none then. All those in favor of the motion say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. That motion's carried. Okay, well, to the city managers' report, Mr. Womack, what do you have for us tonight?
You guys are moving along so quickly.
You didn't have time to put down all your notes, did you?
No, well, I mean, I've got some notes for closer time, but I guess the only thing I would add, although we're already past it, is the paper copy that you received regarding the resolution to revoke tax exemptions was fixing some non-substance typos that we identified. So just, you know, for the council, if you're wondering why that was in front of you, I think we misspelled the word Lapeer once. Oh, we're always trying to prefer for perfection here, yes. But other than that, I don't have anything else to say. Thank you.
Our city attorneys' report.
Congratulations, Mayor. We'll miss you and Commissioner Swindell, so that's it.
Thank you.
And congratulations to you too. Monday Night Soccer.
They are. I don't know what I'm going to do now.
So we have for you.
There's seats out here.
I might have to, yes, I might have to cluck. Okay, under unfinished business, that's for the boards and commission appointments. We have no applications at this time, so there's no appointments to be made either by me or through the commission. And then in your packet for the departmental communications was your DDA monthly report and the quarterly financial report to September 30th, 2025, and the quarterly investment report for September 30th, 2025. So all that's for your reading pleasure, if you haven't already. And we're to public comments again.
Would anybody like to make a public comment now? Please. Hi, thank you. Kelly Nolan, I just wanted to let you know that I went and checked out the mural and it's beautiful. Kudos. I think it's, my only regret is that it can't be seen from Nefesing Street as I'm driving by, so thank you.
Anybody else? All right, then that brings us to our closing comments. And I will start with Commissioner Petrie.
I wanted to first say good luck to each of the candidates and thank you for doing all that you did to run campaigns. There's, there are a lot of work, they're tiring. And I want to put the word fun in there, but I don't know that I can use that. So thank you for all that you did, praying for all three of you. And I, I'm so grateful for your desire and your interest to serve our city. It's, it's a level that most don't, don't do, so thank you for it. And then I want to, and God bless each of you, no matter what the outcome, he has a plan, so thank you. And then I wanted to thank Commissioner Swindell and Mayor Mark Quart for all that you gave to the city in your service and pray that he will keep his hand on you, that he'll give you extra energy, because I know you're going to need it. And that you take a liking to Monday Night Football.
Sounds interesting. Commissioner Brady?
I have no comment tonight, thank you.
Commissioner Glickman?
Oh, thank you. Well, first I do want to thank Mayor Mark Quart and Commissioner Swindell for their service to the City of Lapeer. You gave up an awful lot of your personal time for many years to be here and do what was in your heart, to do what was right for the City of Lapeer. So I want to thank you for that. It's, it's a big chunk out of your life and I, I think you probably both will miss it, a little bit anyway. And I wish you God's blessings, Godspeed in your retirement and keep you safe and keep you healthy. I also want to say that we have three wonderful candidates running for mayor and we have a young lady running for commissioner. And I wish them all well tomorrow, good health tomorrow, and whatever the outcome, please stay engaged with the city. A reminder that November 11th is Veterans Day and usually we talk a little bit more about it. I think because of the election and stuff, we haven't focused as much on that as possible. But let, let's keep all of our veterans in our hearts and in our prayers. And I also want to say the lilac planting that happened last Thursday was just great fun. We had quite a few people come out for it and thank you, Mr. Hogan, for taking pictures of me and everybody else so that we have it documented that we are officially now open for business. We cut the ribbon and, and we're going forward. I want to thank certainly Director Rodney Church for his help and the guys that helped him. They actually did 99.9% of the work. They dug the holes, they were there and, and it really was a great start to the lilac project and it was a lot of fun. I heard from my attorney today that our documents from the state of Michigan for the lilac project as a corporation should be coming in this week. And as soon as we get those, then my attorney will file for a 501(c)(3). And on behalf of our city manager, Mr. Womack, 1783 George Washington disbands the Continental Army as the war came to an end. And also John Adams in 1796 was elected the second president of the United States. Did I steal your thunder?
One of them.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Swindell?
It's my last meeting. It's weird, it's bittersweet. It has absolutely been a pleasure for over four years because I was appointed first, so I got a bonus couple months in there. And it has been great to work with all the department heads, even though, you know, they have been so gracious to answer some of my crazy questions sometimes and always willing to brainstorm and willing to do what's best for our city. And I just appreciate every single one of you, all of you, most days. Thank you, Mayor and Josh, like, for teaching me all the things, answering all my questions in the beginning when I had no idea what I was doing, like, none, I had no idea. The first budget, I think I might have asked you 14,000 questions at least, but.
Kelly, yes.
And I have learned a lot and I now know more than I ever wanted to about how the city works and what each of you do actually for a job. You know, Rodney, your job looks like fun and games all day, but it's really not. And thank you for everybody who comes to meetings. I appreciate that. Thank you, Lynn, for stepping up to take my seat, so I'm glad someone did, for heaven's sakes.
Little bit of apathy out there.
Right. And three of you guys for running for mayor because it is a lot, it's an awful lot. And tomorrow is a long day. It's a really long, tiring, boring day. At least the weather will be cooperative for all of you. And usually when the weather's good, more people will come out. And everyone go vote if you haven't voted yet. We have so many options to vote early, but if you're registered and you have not yet voted, please go tomorrow out in the nice day and vote. It is very important to use your right to vote and exercise that. And if you don't vote, I don't think you have much to complain about unless you are in there. I am extra proud of Commissioner Atwood here for being the MML president and representing our city in a positive light always, even when that's probably very hard to do and you're so good at it. And you always say things so much nicer than I ever can. And it's true. He said once that he, I'm the fire and he's the ice, and that might be true. All the good discussions we've had through the years about all the things, the good, the bad, and the ugly. But we always voted together. It was what was best for the city, not what was best for our ideas. And again, it's been my pleasure, my honor, and thank you guys. Thank you.
Commissioner Atwood?
Well, there's been a lot of thanks going around, so I guess I'll follow suit. I'd just like to say thanks to Mayor Mark Quart and Commissioner Swindell. You know, we haven't always agreed on everything and I'm pretty sure life would be boring if we always agreed on everything. But within those disagreements, I think we grew mutual respect for one another. And it's, it's something that I don't want to neglect or overlook. Each one of you have taught me something in this realm on how to act and react to disagreements or, or times where we do vote together. You know, I, I think I was the one who didn't support you at the very beginning. And you still talk to me, so that's nice.
More than just the wee lady, Josh.
But I, but I have a mutual respect for, for every commissioner individual that stepped up to serve on an elected board. I think I said last meeting that you got to be pretty crazy to do it, but, so I, I just thank you guys for your years of service and it is time away from family and friends and loved ones to come up and come here and hang with people that you probably normally wouldn't hang out with on a day to day. But I appreciate you guys and best of luck in, in the future of whatever you do. And to the upcoming election, again, I have a mad respect for people who put their name on the ballot, first of all, because especially this day and age with Facebook and people can get on a soapbox and tell you whatever they want to tell you. And it can bring disrespect to your name, your family, to where they normally wouldn't come to a public meeting and say that kind of stuff. So I have a, I have a mutual respect for anybody who puts their name on the ballot. I don't care where you stand or what aisle you stand on, I have a mad respect for those. So thank you for putting forth the effort and best of luck to whoever wins. And this would be the 13th commissioner I've served with this upcoming election.
Wow.
And the fourth mayor that I would have, will have served with. So again, each one of these individuals has taught me life lessons that college class would never be able to teach you. And I, I don't want to take that for granted. Again, we might agree, disagree, but within that, you can really learn a lot from one another and gain respect for one another, if you allow it. I thank the city staff for always doing a great job, keeping us safe at night and keeping those bills paid. And the leaves are starting to get picked up. Unless they just blew into a little pure township, but. That's it.
That's it, okay. Mr. Womack, do you have anything to addition to our meeting?
Very short because my city clerk has an election to run early tomorrow. What time are you showing up?
I think it's 5:30.
5:30, so we'll be out of here shortly. Lead pickup started in earnest today. I know they went down at least two streets, but after the wind swirled everything around, which certainly doesn't look like it. July 4th, 2026 mural, any progress on that? I'll keep bugging you until there is because that's, you know, near and dear to my heart as well. You know, thank you to Mayor Mark Quart and Ms. Swindell. Just echo all the things that were already stated. Kind of be a little bit crazy to do this. I've enjoyed working with both of you. I've enjoyed fighting with both of you. Like any successful marriage, you got to have a little bit of working with and fighting. Look forward to working with and fighting with the newly elected people tomorrow. Best of luck to you guys. I've never run for elected position. Certainly I would lose if I did. So I also respect people who even just put themselves up. It's difficult work. You know, difficult to put yourself out there. And then when you're sitting on this side of the table, you know, you'll see what we see every single week, which is how does this affect our community? So it's not about our individual feelings, our individual thoughts, our individual tastes. It's about how do our decisions affect the community? With that, from Ms. Glickman, my friend, who was also the election deets for Taft, FDR, LBJ, Clinton, and Biden.
Wow. You did your homework.
That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you.
I only have one local event and that's for the DD. I only have one local event, and that's for the DDA Fall Ladies' Night Out, which is a lot of fun. Plan on coming. It's Friday, October 14th, starting at 4 o'clock to 9 o'clock, and that's downtown La Pier. And a lot of our business owners, or all of the business owners who are taking part and put a lot into this, and so it's a lot of fun. You know, and also you have a chance to see some of the other vendors and what's all available to us within the La Pier area. So I loved it, can you tell? I want to thank our city manager, of course, all of our department heads, and of course all the employees as well. Twenty-some years, I had the opportunity of working with a lot of various commissioners and learned a lot as well. And that statement came from Wayne Bennett, our previous, previous commissioner, who's obviously, he's no longer with us, but he certainly really cared for our community as well. I worked a couple different mayors as well. So you look, you learn a lot, but most, most of all, you really learn what your city's all about and how everything is put together, and how much work has to be done. Things don't just happen. There's a lot of work into everything, as the commissioners know, so thank that. And of course, even though he's not here this evening, I want to thank my husband, Bill, because he put up with all this for 20-some years and made dinner, so that was pretty nice. So, but I'm very excited, so you got to make dinner, right? I'm very excited to see what my next chapter's going to be in retirement. I hear retirement is sweet, but I'm not going to just sit, because I'm not a sitter, so, most of you already know that. I also want to say good luck to all the candidates. Thank you for all the commitment that you have done and all the working hard on this election. Running an election is also a huge experience, and also something you get to know how the city operates, so I also want to thank the businessers, business owners. It's been a pleasure to work with all of them as well. I've got one final thing I want to bring up, and speaking with, about elections. I really didn't find out until recently that the commission might be able to possibly change election year for the city elections. The city elections are on the odd year, and you could possibly maybe consider to put them on an even year. You would have to overlap, if you were to do it soon, the commission, you would have like so many months or eight months to a year or whatever it is, so instead of a four-year term, your term would be four and three quarters or whatever. That happened while I was in seat as a commissioner, because the elections were April 1st, and then we had to switch it, which was amended by the governor at the time, to a November, and then we also had to change who was going to be elected at one given year. So I hope you just give that some thought down the road, work with Mike and city manager and Ramona, because it's, not only will we get a better turnout, which will be better for the city, of course, but the state has already demonstrated that a stronger voter engagement happens during even years. Local elections with even year cycles tend to diversify the, participation by age, race, and all of that, for both voters and elected officials. Cost savings, though, that's a huge one, and between Ramona and Mike, you can figure out what the cost savings would be to let the commission know, so I really hope that you take a good look at that. So with that, this is my last meeting. Thank you all. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.